All right, the time is six o'clock. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, April 15th, 2025. And we're going to begin with public comments. And Council, just as a note, there are a few online comments for item number eight. One in the engagement HQ under the City Council and then three others under the Uplands section of the City Council. So we can also summarize those when we get to those, that item, but just as a note, if you have a chance to review those ahead of the meeting, there'll be an opportunity to talk about them later as well. With that, we'll open up for public comments for those who are present, who wish to go up to the podium and speak at this time, and please do so and state your name. And there'll of course be opportunities to talk at specific agenda items later on. All right, Council, we're going to move on to agenda number three, which is Council Consideration of Agenda Items for Approval on Consent. Councilmember Rosengard.
I move to approve on consent agenda item number four, the minutes, agenda item number five, resolution, and agenda item number six, and a correction in the resolution.
Yes, and item number five, let's go and pull that just so we can do the correction for it because there's one more correction that we need as well. So we'll just be, I'm going to pull item number five, so it'll be four and six unless somebody else wants to pull one of those items. Is there a second for the motion to approving consent, item number four and six?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. All right, we approved on consent, the minutes from the April 1st, 2025 regular meeting. And item number six, the approval of amendments to the Financial Policy 107, Control of Revenue as Recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. And thanks to the Budget and Finance Committee for working through those financial policies and looking forward to discussion of the later one too, since that's been an outstanding one we've had for a little while. So let's move on to item number five. The one correction here is that this is actually not a resolution, it's a proclamation. So we just want to make sure that that language is clear. So that the, the item should read, Consider and Act on Approval, a proclamation declaring May 2025 as wildfire preparedness month in the City of Sunset Valley. And Councilmember Rosengard submitted one other correction to the proclamation which has been incorporated into the copy that I have here, and that's going to be part of the approval if we approve it. All right, any motions?
Come on, you got to share with them.
Yes, it used to be, it used to say that the increased risk of wildfires and the duration of the wildlife season within Texas. But Councilmember Rosengard noted that the wildlife season is just overlaps with the barbecue season here in Texas quite strongly, so. Is there a motion to, to, for this item?
I'll move.
All right, move to approve. Is there a second?
All second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. All right, we approved on consent, the minutes from the April 1st, 2025 regular meeting. And item number six, the approval of amendments to the Financial Policy 107, Control of Revenue as Recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. And thanks to the Budget and Finance Committee for working through those financial policies and looking forward to discussion of the later one too, since that's been an outstanding one we've had for a little while. So let's move on to item number five. The one correction here is that this is actually not a resolution, it's a proclamation. So we just want to make sure that that language is clear. So that the, the item should read, Consider and Act on Approval, a proclamation declaring May 2025 as wildfire preparedness month in the City of Sunset Valley. And Councilmember Rosengard submitted one other correction to the proclamation which has been incorporated into the copy that I have here, and that's going to be part of the approval if we approve it. All right, any motions?
Come on, you got to share with them.
Yes, it, it used to be, it used to say that the increased risk of wildfires and the duration of the wildlife season within Texas. But Councilmember Rosengard noted that the wildlife season is just overlaps with the barbecue season here in Texas quite strongly, so. Is there a motion to, to, for this item?
I'll move.
All right, move to approve. Is there a second?
All second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. All right, motion passes. I, we'll go ahead and read the proclamation, but this is actually, you know, one thing that we as a city take very seriously in terms of our wildfire preparation. We are going to be having, both the month ahead is going to be designated as our wildfire preparedness month, but there is also going to be, I think, a, a game, gaming out scenario that the Fire Department, Austin Fire Department is going to be helping out with next month as well. Is that correct?
I, I don't think we've scheduled the tabletop, but we have, we have like a resident engagement day.
Yeah, it's a resident. So it's, I don't know if you've ever seen them, I think they're bringing the sand table over. They're going to bring the sand table over, which can kind of give you an idea of what the, and they can project basically Sunset Valley on it, and you can look at wildfire behavior from that sand table, so.
All right, all right, so the proclamation by the mayor and City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas, declaring the month of May 2025 wildfire preparedness month. Whereas the threat of wildfires greatly impacts our entire region, including the residents of Sunset Valley. And whereas the impact of climate change has greatly increased the risk of wildfires and the duration of wildfire season within Texas. And whereas the City of Sunset Valley Council is charged with protecting the health and safety of the citizens of Sunset Valley, including all properties situated therein. And whereas wildfires threaten the environmental, economic, and social well-being of Sunset Valley residents while challenging firefighters' efforts to protect life and property. And whereas residents have the responsibility to recognize the high risk of wildfire and institute safe and early evacuation plans, increase their home's resistance to wildfire, and create fire-adapted communities to increase the safety and survivability of the public and emergency personnel. And whereas wildfire preparedness month is an important opportunity for Sunset Valley residents to reduce the risk of wildfire and enhance public safety and awareness through education on fire safety, preparation, and prevention. And whereas the City of Sunset Valley partners with the Austin Fire Department and other federal, state, and volunteer agencies to inform individuals on how to take action through mitigation activities that reduce wildfire risk. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas, that May is wildfire preparedness month in Sunset Valley. And all community members, businesses, and visitors are encouraged to develop their own emergency, emergency preparedness plans, participate in wildfire awareness activities, join in efforts to reduce wildfire threat to their homes, and help the City of Sunset Valley become wildfire-ready. Passed and adopted on the 15th of April 2025. Thank you, Council, for approving that. And then moving on to the agenda items for discussion and possible action. Item number seven, which is Consider and Act on a Request for Variances to the Sections 150.729A1, 150.729C1B, and 157.29C2B, for a sign at Leona Botanical Cafe and Bar at 650, 6405 Brody Lane. And we'll hand it over to the Development Manager for this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. I'm Jerry Rustovin, the Development Services Manager. As the mayor said, these are three variances. I won't reread the, the address or the code sections. I'll simply go over each variance and why the staff is recommending each one. The first variance is the requirement that the sign be lit with what we call reverse channel backlit letters. This variance, the main portion of the sign would still have reverse channel backlit letters as recorded by the code. However, there will be three smaller signs. Matt pulled it up right there. It's a little bit to the left on that sheet. Underneath the, the main, the main name of Leona, there's going to be three smaller signs reflecting three different brands that will be a part of the, the cafe there. So those signs are so small that doing the reverse channel letters really doesn't work. That only works for kind of a larger sign. So these are going to be indirectly lit, but they're not going to be reverse channel. So staff is recommending it because they are so small, and reverse channel doesn't make sense at that small size. The second variance has to do with the construction of the sign itself. The sign is on a pole. Our code only allows for freestanding monument signs made of masonry materials. Staff is recommending the, the pole sign as opposed to a smaller, shorter monument sign. Because the main business is about 500 feet off the street, and it would be very difficult to see a stone masonry sign, you know, kind of on the ground from Brody, which has higher speeds as well. And it's just, this, at this location, you know, the, it's not apparent as you're driving by in a car that there's a restaurant there. And so we feel that the, the sign is justified for that reason. The third variance, our reasons aren't the same as what I just stated, and that is to simply allow it to be two feet higher than what the code allows. This sign does have some constraints in the sense that there are two large trees on either side of it, both on the north and the south. There's a set of power lines that they have to set back from. There's a fence across the front of the property. And as I said, it's, the, the business is recessed back quite a ways. So we feel that allowing them two feet greater height because of those site obstacles on Brody is justified. Staff does recommend approval of all three variances, and if the council finds that it meets the criteria in 150.735, which is in your backup, then the council may approve the variance as well. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is here, as well as a representative of the sign company, so if there are any questions, they're available also.
May I speak with the engineer? Explain the push-out lettering.
Sure, so a push-through letter is essentially a piece of acrylic that goes through the face of it. So it's routed aluminum, the acrylic pushes through. And then a, sometimes it's vinyl, majority of the time it's aluminum, caps it. So the only thing that actually lights on it is the edge that pushes through. So it, it upholds the same appearance as a halo or indirect lit channel letter.
And, and that is done on the three bottom signs, not the coffee and cocktail or all four of those signs?
So that's going to be the coffee and cocktail sign. The three bottom signs can be done that way, but we were recommending that they would be just direct lit because they are so, so, so far setback.
Okay, direct lit means that there's going to be a light on the ground?
Direct lit would mean a light behind it, so the face of it would actually light up.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
I, I have a question too. The, the deal is actually, the, the graphic that's up, I guess serves as my, my question. The, the sign, the horizontal part of the sign stands six foot, four inches off the ground. Is it anticipated that pedestrians or people are going to, as a course of commerce, be walking underneath this thing? It was hard to tell where the, where the sign standoff was relative to the, to the sidewalks.
Sure, so it, it's actually inset into the property due to overhead power lines. It's actually inset, I believe, 10 feet from the power lines and substantially further back from the road itself. And as well as there is a fence that's being erected in front of it. So pedestrians shouldn't be anywhere near it.
Councilor Johnson.
You learned to stay up there. The indirect light, or the direct lighting for the lower ones, can you just like point on that screen behind you, like where the lights will be?
Sure, so it'll be the Didi Cafe, the three circular signs.
But where's the light coming? Like where are the actual lights?
So they're, they're contained within it.
Oh, okay. So this is like no dark sky implications on this? Okay, that's it.
And we also spoke with the applicants, the, the light, the light will be turned off right when the business is.
Councilor Rosengard.
Just a note for staff. In the body of the cover page, it says that it's two feet in additional from what code is. It's actually two feet, eight inches in addition from what code is. So code is 10 feet, and it's 12 feet, eight inches above from code. With that, I move to approve the three variances for Botanical Cafe and Bar, Didi, and Veric.
And item number six, the approval of amendments to the financial policy 107, control of revenue as recommended by the budget and finance committee. And thanks to the budget and finance committee for working through those financial policies and looking forward to discussion of the later one, too, since that's been an outstanding one we've had for a little while. So let's move on to item number five. The one correction here is that this is actually not a resolution, it's a proclamation. So we just want to make sure that that language is clear. So that the, the item should read, consider an act on approval, a proclamation declaring May 2025 is wildfire preparedness month in the city of Sunset Valley. And Councilmember Rosa Garden submitted one other correction to the proclamation which has been incorporated into the copy that I have here, and that's going to be part of the approval if we approve it. All right? Any motions?
Come on, you gotta share with them.
Yes, it, it used to be, it used to say that the increased risk of wildfires and the duration of the wildlife season within Texas. But Councilmember Rosa Garden noted that the wildlife season is just overlaps with the barbecue season here in Texas quite strongly, so. Is there a motion to, to, for this item?
I'll move.
All right, move to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say nay. All right, motion passes. I, we'll go ahead and read the proclamation, but this is actually, you know, one thing that we, as a city, take very seriously in terms of our wildfire preparation. We are going to be having, both the month ahead is going to be designated as our wildfire preparedness month, but there is also going to be, I think, a game, gaming out scenario that the fire department, for Austin Fire Department, is going to be helping out with next month as well. Is that correct?
I, I don't think we've scheduled the tabletop, but we have, we have like a resident engagement day.
Yeah, it's a resident. So it's a, I don't know if you've ever seen them, I think they're bringing the sand table over. They're going to bring the sand table over, which can kind of give you an idea of what the, and they can project basically Sunset Valley on it, and you can look at wildfire behavior from that sand table, so.
Right. All right, so the proclamation by the mayor and city council of the city of Sunset Valley, Texas, declaring the month of May 2025 wildfire preparedness month. Whereas the threat of wildfires greatly impacts our entire region, including the residents of Sunset Valley, and whereas the impact of climate change has greatly increased the risk of wildfires and the duration of wildfire season within Texas. And whereas the city of Sunset Valley council is charged with protecting the health and safety of the citizens of Sunset Valley, including all property situated therein, and whereas wildfires threaten the environmental, economic, and social well-being of Sunset Valley residents while challenging firefighters' efforts to protect life and property, and whereas residents have the responsibility to recognize the high risk of wildfire and institute safe and early evacuation plans, increase their homes' resistance to wildfire, and create fire-adapted communities to increase the safety and survivability of the public and emergency personnel. And whereas wildfire preparedness month is an important opportunity for Sunset Valley residents to reduce the risk of wildfire and enhance public safety and awareness through education on fire safety, preparation, and prevention, and whereas the city of Sunset Valley partners with the Austin Fire Department and other federal, state, and volunteer agencies to inform individuals on how to take action through mitigation activities that reduce wildfire risk. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Sunset Valley, Texas, that May is wildfire preparedness month in Sunset Valley. And all community members, businesses, and visitors are encouraged to develop their own emergency, emergency preparedness plans, participate in wildfire awareness activities, join in efforts to reduce wildfire threat to their homes, and help the city of Sunset Valley become wildfire-ready. Passed and adopted on the 15th of April 2025. All right, thank you, council, for approving that. And then moving on to the agenda items for discussion and possible action. Item number seven, which is consider an act on a request for variances to the sections 150.729A1, 150.729C1B, and 157.29C2B for a sign at Leona Botanical Cafe and Bar at 650, 6405 Brody Lane. And we'll hand it over to the development manager for this.
Thank you, mayor and council. Good evening, I'm Jerry Rustovin, the development services manager. As the mayor said, these are three variances. I won't reread the, the address or the code sections, I'll simply go over each variance and why the staff is recommending each one. The first variance is the requirement that the sign be lit with what we call reverse-channel backlit letters. This variance, the main portion of the sign would still have reverse-channel backlit letters as recorded by the code. However, there will be three smaller signs. Matt pulled it up right there, it's a little bit to the left on that sheet. Underneath the, the main, the main name of Leona, there's going to be three smaller signs reflecting three different brands that will be a part of the cafe there. So those signs are so small that doing the reverse-channel letters really doesn't work, that only works for kind of a larger sign. So these are going to be indirectly lit, but they're not going to be reverse-channel. So staff is recommending it because they are so small, and reverse-channel doesn't make sense at that small size. The second variance has to do with the construction of the sign itself. The sign is on a pole. Our code only allows for freestanding monument signs made of masonry materials. Staff is recommending the, the pole sign as opposed to a smaller, shorter monument sign, because the main business is about 500 feet off the street, and it would be very difficult to see a stone masonry sign, you know, kind of on the ground from Brody, which has higher speeds as well. And it's just, this, at this location, you know, the, it's not apparent, as you're driving by in a car, that there's a restaurant there. And so we feel that the, the sign is justified for that reason. The third variance, our reasons aren't the same as what I just stated, and that is to simply allow it to be two feet higher than what the code allows. This sign does have some constraints in the sense that there are two large trees on the other side of it, both on the north and the south. There's a set of power lines that they have to set back from, there's a fence across the front of the property, and as I said, it's, the, the business has recessed back quite a ways. So we feel that allowing them two feet greater height because of those site obstacles on Brody is justified. Staff does recommend approval of all three variances, and if the council finds that it meets the criteria in 150.735, which is in your backup, then the council may approve the variance as well. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is here, as well as a representative of the sign company, so I believe if there are any questions, they're available also.
May I speak with the engineer? Explain the push-out lettering.
Sure. So a push-through letter is essentially a piece of acrylic that goes through the face of it, so it's routed aluminum, the acrylic pushes through, and then a, sometimes it's vinyl, majority of the time it's aluminum, caps it. So the only thing that actually lights on it is the edge that pushes through. So it, it upholds the same appearance as a halo or indirect-lit channel letter.
And, and that is done on the three bottom signs, not the coffee and cocktail or all four of those signs?
So that's going to be the coffee and cocktail sign. The three bottom signs can be done that way, but we were recommending that they would be just direct-lit, because they are so, so, so far setback.
Okay. Direct-lit means that there's going to be a light on the ground?
Direct-lit would mean a light behind it, so the face of it would actually light up.
Face will light up, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
I, I have a question, too. The, it deals, actually, the, the graphic that's up, I guess serves as my, my question. The, the sign, the horizontal part of the sign stands six foot, four inches off the ground. Is it anticipated that pedestrians or people are going to, as a course of commerce, be walking underneath this thing? It was hard to tell where the, where the sign standoff was relative to the, to the sidewalks.
Sure. So it, it's actually inset into the property due to overhead power lines. It's actually inset, I believe, 10 feet from the power lines and substantially further back from the road itself, and, as well as there is a fence that's being erected in front of it. So pedestrians shouldn't be anywhere near it.
Councilor Johnson.
You learned to stay up there. The indirect light, or the direct lighting for the lower ones, can you just like point on that screen behind you, like where the lights will be?
Sure. So it'll be the Didi Cafe, the three circular signs.
But where's the light coming, like where are the actual lights?
So they're, they're contained within it.
Oh, okay. So this is like no dark sky implications on this? Okay, that's it?
And we also spoke with the applicants, the, the light, the light will be turned off right when the business is.
Councilmember Rose here.
Just a note for staff, in the body of the cover page, it says that it's two feet in additional from what code is. It's actually two feet, eight inches in addition from what code is. So code is 10 feet, and it's 12 feet, eight inches above from code. With that, I move to approve the three variances for Botanical Cafe and Bar, Didi, and Veracruz, and their third eatery with the findings of A through D.
This motion to approve with the variance with the findings, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. That opens up for further discussion. I do want to make sure that if anybody's here to speak to this item, they get a chance to. So if any members of the public wish to speak at this time, please step out of the podium. Oh, Councilmember Johnson?
Well, this is only the second side variance we've had in quite a while. The last one was slab barbecue. And we're going to be rewriting the plan development code, and this is part of it. And there was like a lot of feedback when we did that, that maybe our, our side ordinances are a little restrictive and aged. So, yeah, this will be part of it. Just further mention of that.
Councilmember Rose here.
When we did slab barbecue, or the previous owner before slab barbecue, we took into account that they weren't near the retail center, they were by themselves, so thus what we had at the retail center, we didn't expect them to be uniform with the retail when they're way over here. I'm going to say, close to the country.
Close to the country, why?
Yeah.
All right, any other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say nay. All right. You're welcome. One more step to hopefully opening soon.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Looking forward to it.
Looking forward to it.
All right. Council, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is presentation, discussion, and possible action on a schematic design plan for the uplands and triangle properties by Men Collaborative. And I'm going to hand this over for a brief introduction to, by staff, before handing over to Men for going through the presentation that was part of our backup.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, mayor and council, and members of the public. This has been a long process since the city purchased the uplands many, many years ago, and it's been through several iterations of community meetings and arguments at times. But we, the, the city moved forward with Men to work on a schematic design incorporating all of the feedback that we've received over the years, and most recently with the adoption of the Parks and Open Space Plan. There was one community, which Carrie with Men is going to discuss, there was one community outreach, but we also have all of the wealth of input that, that the city has gathered over the years. So again, this is about the schematic design. This kind of takes Men to the end of this current task order. So moving forward, you know, next steps, you know, council could approve the plan as is, I'm sure there's going to be modifications, so that, that would all be done in the next phase of the project. So, you know, and it would all have to go through the budgeting process as well. So just wanted to, to make that, make that statement. And also, the, the scope of this project, I know there was something presented at the, at the community meeting that included a possible roadway. We sort of took that out of the scope based on some feedback, and so it's really focusing on just the uplands and the triangle, but also how to get people to the uplands, so there's some improvements to MSG Bob Horgan. So, all right, I'll give it over to Carrie with Men. And also, we have an updated presentation, so that wasn't in the backup, so.
Thanks, Matt. Would you mind making that full screen? I think you were in the right spot, the bottom right. And then say, full screen. There you go. All right, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, council, for having me here to present tonight on the upland schematic design package. My name is Carrie Spiegelhalter, and I'm a founding partner and landscape architect at Men Collaborative, and I'm here to talk about the upland schematic design and where we are so far. So, Matt, if you, if you wouldn't mind, so as I'm sure you all are aware, this is the upland site, which is located along 290 in the north of Sunset Valley. It's an undeveloped tract that currently hosts the farmer's market on the, the triangle parcel that is just on the other side of MSG Bob Horgan. And the, the other thing to note in this image, for those of you who might not be familiar with this site, is, is the presence of the street MSG Bob Horgan, because that will kind of come into the play of our design a little bit later. So it's an undeveloped piece of land that hosts a farmer's market, and there's a lot of beautiful, natural assets, including large oak trees and a broad diversity of bird species. So it's a very special piece of land. And we've been working on the schematic design package since December of 2024. We developed three concept designs that we brought to the community in February of 2025. And since then, after receiving feedback on that, on those three concept designs, we've been working to final concept designs through a schematic design package that we'll be showing you here today. So I'm not going to go into depth about each of the three concept plans, but there was one feature that really tied them all together, and that was the removal of the MSG Bob Horgan Road, beginning at the southwest property line of the site. And it, then having the road terminate into a roundabout that would allow people to go into the Burger Center Stadium, or make a U-turn and turn around and, and go back towards Jones Road. So these options varied. Option one had an uncovered farmer's market plaza on the former location of the road. Option two had a circular covered path with farmer's market stalls along them, and a tree deck along with a pickleball court, and also a covered area for the farmer's market. And option three had a pavilion structure in the southwest corner of the property. So what we heard from community engagement is that in terms of the farmer's market, the majority of community members liked the location of the farmer's market in concept one, so that would be having it along MSG Bob, the former location of the road. They are generally in favor of a pavilion structure to cover the farmer's market area if it's located where there is already existing impervious surfacing. And what I mean by that is the, the road is impervious, existing surfacing, and so locating another impervious structure that has to be impervious, like the pavilion, at that location where it's already impervious makes sense and was desired by the community. In terms of the gathering space, community members would like it to have a minimal impact on the environment and to be relatively small. The pickleball court, community members are generally in favor of a pickleball court if, again, it's located on surfacing that is already impervious, so located along where the road is currently. And many suggested that the pickleball court could be within the pavilion structure. In terms of the kids' play area, there was some community support of the feature, however, some community members commented that the city already has play features in other locations. And for the tree deck, the tree deck received kind of an equal number of community members in favor and against the feature. And we also consulted with other stakeholders as a part of this process, including the Sustainable Food Center. They preferred concept two due to the fact that it had the greatest capacity for tents and a covered shade structure. They were really in favor of providing farmer's market patron, farmer market patrons protection from shade and rain, it's a high priority for them. And they see the kids' play area as an important feature for families who are coming to shop at the farmer's market. So, and currently, the farmer's market hosts about 50 to 55 tents, but they see big potential for growth if they had the capacity. Well, they would like to see the potential to grow to about 80 to 90 tents. We also consulted with AISD, Austin Independent School District. They currently do not have any upcoming plans for the Burger Center or Sunset Valley Elementary, and they don't see any issues with our proposed design. However, they recognize that the existing surface parking lots at the Burger Center are not the highest and best use of the property. So in the future, undetermined time span for this, there might be changes to the existing surface parking. So what that means for us is, we should really consider a design that can accommodate parking. We don't need, necessarily need to include it now, but we should be able to accommodate it in the future if Burger Center parking is not available. And at the moment, sometimes it's not available for the farmer's market. So in that case, we should provide overflow parking for when that's not available and there's not enough street parking. And so taking what we heard from the community and those stakeholders, and also conversations with yourselves, we developed our final concept goals, and that was to, number one, create a design that is net impervious surface reduction, and we can really achieve that because of the removal of the road. Provide an opportunity for the farmer's market to grow to 80 to 90 tents. Provide shade for farmer's market shoppers and a location to host events on non-farmer's market days. Really concentrate uses at the southwestern portion of the site. Keep the rest of the area natural to minimize impact on the site's ecology. Provide amenities that require impervious surfing in locations where impervious surfacing is already in place, so thinking about the pickleball court, the pavilion, so to really minimize impact to the environment. Create a walking loop, where walkers can enjoy the natural beauty of the uplands and track their mileage. Create a farmer's market loop that's easy to navigate and minimizes foot-traffic conflicts for shoppers. So here's our overall site plan. The final plan really accomplished all the goals that we had set out, and we hope is something that the community, from what we heard, and from what we heard at our community engagement, is excited about. So you'll see, as I mentioned earlier, that MSG Bob Horgan Road gets removed, and it now terminates as a roundabout at the southwestern property line. We have that farmer's market pavilion, that's number one on, on the map that you'll see here. It provides the community a covered space for the SFC farmer's market with room for 42 pop-up tents. The pavilion has fans and lighting and may also be used for special events. And we'll also have cisterns along the sides of the pavilion to hold water coming up the structure, and to also provide water for irrigation for perennial plantings along the edges of the pavilion. We'll have a welcome plaza, that's number two in the design, so just north of where MSG Bob Horgan terminates. And this area also has a loading zone for farmer's market vendors that might need to drop stuff off, and also for people to drop off folks to be able to get to the farmer's market. The welcome plaza has wayfinding, bike racks, benches, and perennial beds with trees, and portable toilets are provided within a locking wood structure. Number five, the gathering space area, is a, is a central area to provide community members and farmer's market patrons a space to enjoy food from the farmer's market, gather and listen to live music. A small kids' play area attracts families and keeps kids occupied. The picnic table plaza is also ADA accessible, and a covered bandstand is provided for market day entertainment. Just north of the pavilion are the, are two pickleball courts, also at the location of the former road. This is an opportunity for community members to play pickleball, and is protected with a 10-foot-tall chain link fence, along with plant and tree buffer plantings to protect pickleball players from the sound of the road. And in terms of parking, we're providing parallel parking along MSG Bob Horgan Trail by adding striping and some shade trees. In addition to the parking that is currently at the Burger Center, the area between the school and the uplands, I think that's kind of hard to see in terms of the numbers, but it's number nine, oh no, that's not, number eight is the overflow parking, thank you. And so that is currently proposed to be simply grass. Right now, it's actually like a materials storage area, so we're proposing changing that into grass, keeping it pretty low-impact, and having it just be an overflow area or location for parking when and if the Burger Center is not available. And then, next slide, please. Actually, you could just go past that one. And for the farmer's market, the market layout is really designed to take visitors through the pavilion and around in a farmer's market loop. So the, the pavilion structure has the capacity to host 42 tents, as I mentioned, and the full farmer's market loop with all the tents that are shown here can host a total of 92 And you'll see the pavilion is 38 feet by 280 feet long, and it's about 10,600 square feet. In terms of local comparisons, I don't know if you all have been to these other farmer's market, but if you visit the beautif farmer's market pavilion, they're actually quite larger. They have 18,000 square feet, and the Mueller or Austin farmer's market pavilion has about 17,600 square feet. So just to kind of get a sense of what this feels like and what it looks like and what the capacity is, it's about the same or even, you know, even less than similar farmer's markets close by. Here's a perspective view of what the farmer's market might look like as you enter from the welcome plaza on a farmer's market day. So we have the pavilion, the city could put their logo on it, kind of branded as the Sunset Valley Farmer's Market, with lighting and fans, bike parking. You'll see the rainwater cisterns kind of at the bottom left of the, of the page here to collect water from the pavilion, and also we're kind of surrounded by native Texas perennial And here's some images of what different days at the uplands could look like. So in terms of daily use, you'll see, we're showing the farmer's market kind of tents as those yellow boxes. So on an everyday use, this could be a Wednesday at 9:00 AM, you know, there's, there aren't any farmer's market or event, events happening here, so you'll really just be using maybe the gathering spaces, walking along the trails. At a weekly market, the weekly market, this market loop has a capacity for 92 tents, and a large event has a capacity for somewhere around 200, could even expand. This is something like the, the Art Fest or another big event where you are really utilizing the paths to have tents and other spaces for vendors. And in terms of circulation, we're expecting that people visiting the uplands would come from a variety of ways. So we've accommodated bike parking at the welcome plaza. You'll also see two shared-use paths running along MSG Bob Horgan and Upper Reese that connect all the way to Jones Road for both bicyclists and pedestrians. We also know the uplands are a place where many community members come to walk and appreciate nature, so we've identified a one-third of a mile loop where folks can walk and conveniently track their mileage. Cars would be coming up from MSG Bob Horgan and either take the roundabout and park in the Burger Center and then walk into the farmer's market pavilion, or they would park along MSG Bob Horgan. And, oh yeah, in the event that the Burger Center has an event and there's a farmer's market day, they could park in the overflow parking. And in terms of the community gathering space, with the growing popularity of the farmer's market, this would be a place for people to sit and eat their prepared foods, so we've provided a small gathering space. We are keeping it pretty natural with decomposed granite surfacing, wood picnic tables, a small covered bandstand made of wood, and a small kids' play area. Here is our materials plan. So we really took what the community said to heart about only adding impervious surfacing where there is existing impervious surfacing. So that was the main decision in where we cited the pavilion and the pickleball courts. So while we still would need to demolish the road and use the appropriate paving surface, which would be concrete for the pavilion and sports court surfacing for the pickleball court, adding the features where the road used to be will have much less of an impact to the environment, because then we're not disturbing area that's green and undeveloped where using land that has already been disturbed because it had road on it. And as far as other materials go, we're keeping it pretty natural-looking, using mostly decomposed granite and some limestone flagstone at the welcome plaza. And as far as furnishing goes, we are providing a lot of kind of basic amenities, including picnic tables, benches, play equipment, wayfinding, a fence to delineate the overflow parking area, and also prevent adjacent property owners from using it, and rainwater cisterns to hold water from the pavilion structure. You can go to the next slide here, so people can kind of see what some of those look like. Okay? And in terms of the planting plan, the strategy includes providing sound buffer trees and shrubs along Highway 71, perennial planting and stormwater planting along the pavilion, shade trees in the gathering spaces, and natural area restoration, so that includes some of the woodland areas. There's also some relatively open areas that could be restored to kind of a prairie-like or meadow environment. And we'll really dive into more detail into the next, in our next phases of the design of what that looks like. And in terms of construction, we are similar to City Hall, thinking about what the city could do in-house versus what a contractor would have to take on. So the city would be able to build and construct most of the paths along with a gathering space area. So most of the trails and paths, the benches, the, potentially the covered pavil-, uh, not the pavilion, the covered bandstand and the kids' play area. And then finally, we engaged with an outside estimating company, they're called Sunland Group, to help us with the construction cost estimate. And in terms of capital improvements, this would be about three-point-two million. We also estimated, and this was, has to, I have to say it is an estimation, estimated what professional services might cost, so something like an architect for the pavilion, of course, a civil engineer, surveyor, electrician, et cetera. And so altogether, that cost added up to about three-point-two million. Sorry, three-point-five million, thank you. And that is it for my presentation. I'm happy to take any comments or questions.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the work to get to this point and present to council, especially hosting, hosting the community input events. I know you work with staff very closely. And I'm glad that you also were able to get in touch with some of the stakeholders and get their, their feedback, too. Council, I'll open it up for questions, and of course, we have a chance for the public to speak to this as well.
So Karen, I just had a question on, when you showed the part that could be done in-house and the part that would be external.
Mm-hmm.
Is the three-point-five just the external?
We estimated it kind of with the paths being created by the city and the others kind of based on mostly materials. So the paths have been estimated to be for the city. And because we're kind of on, unsure about, let's say, something like the bandstand, we did include that in the cost. So the gathering spaces are included in the cost as if a contractor would build them.
Councilor Burrell.
Hello, the, I have two questions for, well, one for you and one for Chief Carter. The, the question for you, I guess the, you've, you know, you sought input from the stakeholders, which is great. It, I'm, my interest is with AISD because I, I guess I, I'd like to maybe get some assurance from you that the, the interest of Sunset Valley Elementary were really captured in those conversations. Because I can imagine that maybe there might be some insight or perspective from Sunset Valley Elementary itself that may not be captured by talking with someone at, at AISD.
Sure, I think that is a fair point because we really, we spoke to their development team and asked them about their future plans, but we didn't have a chance to speak directly to the elementary school itself. Carolyn, have you spoken to them recently?
And AISD is very interested. We just had another meeting with them today with the Director of Real Estate, and they did confirm there are no, again, plans in this next cycle for redeveloping Sunset Valley Elementary. It's obviously in need, you know, it's been a long time since it's been remodeled. And as many community members have mentioned, when they remodel the schools, they generally, you know, flip them, reorient them. However, AIS is very interested in pursuing, developing a road along Upper Reese and making a circle. I know there's mixed feelings about that among council members, but that's what they're very much interested in. I don't think these developments at the uplands are necessarily going to, well, impact any, what future development would happen at the school. But if the, the school does flip, I think they would definitely be interested in having a road, Upper Reese and Stadium Drive.
My, my question for Chief Carter is, are there, is there, given, given this schematic, is there anything, are there any issues that, that you see that relative to security and the police department that we should know about?
We spoke to the AISD today, and I had an issue because that, we use that for, like, overflow for graduations. They had the same, but we were, we looked at some options for that. And not, it shouldn't be a problem with graduation, we have plenty of time to plan around it. The only thing I was concerned about, and it's not in there, is like a permanent structure with doors that can close, you know, where we could have people in there overnight or living in there. And that's not part of the plan. That's my biggest fear is just, you know, public restrooms, structures that are in the uplands, that would present some security concerns for us.
Councilor Rosenberg.
I have a number of questions, but I'll take a few at a time. Number one, you keep showing tents underneath the pavilion. Why tents underneath the pavilion? It's already covered. Forty-two tents underneath the pavilion.
Oh, well, it's all, it's to shade the, the shoppers as well, so.
So, so I, I think, so councilman, yeah, it does seem, it seems strange. Why would you put up a tent under, but I used to vend for a farmer, so many of the farmers, they have a vinyl banner that says their farm. And if you don't have a tent, how are you going to hang that sign up? So farmers are just used to popping up, or vendors, I should expand it to vendors, are used to popping up tents wherever they go. And so if you go to the Buta Farmer's Market, you, you walk under a pavilion and there's tents. But it's actually quite nice to be out of sight of the elements because if it's raining, the tent fills up with water, yeah, so, yeah. Oh, Maya, can you, can you, we gotta, we gotta get it on record, so yeah. Or, yeah, to the mic, yeah, sorry.
So I, I, hi, everyone. I want to add that it's a requirement from the health department. So the food is not exposed. They require that there's, there are tents above the food. So if the food is, is exposed, there's not dust or, you know, anything else. So it is a requirement, yes.
Next one, the perspective view that you show looks beautiful, but it also tells me that we were adding all these things, and they're going to need maintenance. They're going to need repair. They're going to need replacement cost money put aside. So the three million is not even listing everything that we need to consider. Will we need more staff to maintain this?
I know that's something that, that the staff is working through right now is how those costs kind of get bundled in over the course of upcoming years.
So we met today, and we've been talking about it over the past few weeks. So all in all, we figured this would add about, and this is, again, an estimate, about thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars to annual maintenance. But the bulk of that is landscaping. And the bulk of that would be if we continue with, like, the Texascape contracts. It would be very expensive for Texascapes to, to maintain that versus if we did the landscaping in-house. As far as the actual, you know, year-to-year, year-over-year maintenance, Dakota and Carolyn can speak to it, it shouldn't be too much, but yes, there will be replacement costs. But that's something also, you know, we need to, as a, as a city, as council, and when we're working on the budget, we'll, we'll be proposing it this year as really highlighting facility repair and replacement as part of the CIP and replacement budget. But yes, building the structure would add to that because it would be a, you know, a structure that we would need to maintain over time. But it should have at least, you know, twenty years of life in it before any sort of major repair would be needed.
Even with twenty years before we have to repla-, repair or replace it, you also have critters and dust and spiders up in the inside of the pavilion that have to be cleaned. So it needs to be cleaned so that you don't have that dust coming down. The ceiling fans need to be cleaned on a regular basis and so on. My next question is overflow parking. You're showing seventy-two spots on that location where we really wanted to reserve that land for a future drive around behind the elementary school. How did you line up seventy-two vehicles on that spot? And then you're fencing it with a wood fence.
We, well, we, we put them in kind of on either, on either side, and it added.
There's enough room to do two vehicles.
If you do, um, at an angle.
At an angle, so thirty-six.
I can double-check that to make sure, but that's what we, that's what we found.
It didn't look that wide in order to accommodate seventy-two vehicles in that area. Okay, I'm going to let someone else speak for a while, and I'll come back with some more questions.
Councilor Johnson.
The, um, I've never been to the Buta Farmer's Market. Do they fill that building? I've seen, I've been in that, that structure, and it is comically large. Do they actually fill it with a farmer's market?
I've actually never been on a farmer's market day, so I can't say.
I, I, I've been there. I would say that that structure is not filled every, like, with farmers and stuff like that. On farmer's market days necessarily, on when they do Butafest and Wiener Dog Festival, yeah, that place is packed and filled.
That's pretty amazing. The, the rendering seems to be like it, it's like a gray plastic, like, just tinted plastic. Is that the?
The pavilion structure?
Yeah.
It would be primarily metal. And you, we could have, like, wood timbers and then a metal roof, but that's the start. We wouldn't use plastic for it.
You can see the trees over on the, through the roof, over on that side. Okay.
No, I, it's just to kind of provide some transparency so you could see beyond it, just sort of for the purpose of the architectural rendering.
All right, that's good. That's good then. The, for me, the pickleball, I think we could just move that underneath because we could just.
So that is, that would add staff time, right? So you would inevitably, you know, you'd have a farmer's market, and then the market's done, then you'd want, oh, someone in the community would want to go play pickleball. Staff would have to come and set up the nets. And, or we could just draw the squares, but we've gotten feedback that I think community members would rather have a permanent net, so why not just, I think it just, how did we phrase it? It ju-, it limits the pavilion if you also say, this, hey, this is where the pickleball is going to be played versus having a separate.
I, I don't think we cater to any recreation as much as we're willing to cater to pickleball. So I, people, people show, people show up at the dam and they just bring their own nets.
Right, well, now we're having to provide those nets.
B-Y-O-N, people.
Yeah, oh yeah.
At all, okay. Then I can just say, no pickleball.
There you go, you could just, you could just vote against pickleball.
And people, people use that and they love it back there, so, and they have to tote their, their nets all the way out there, so.
We just can't publicize that.
And, and that's not necessarily forever. Eventually, we may have to rebuild it and the dam may not.
They could just bring their nets underneath the pavilion, and they don't even have to go as far. Okay, are we allowed to park on the grass for overflow? I mean, I see people park on grass, but it.
And that is a, that is a right of way. But yeah, that is something else to consider. That is sort of our, in talking with AISD and, and learning about some plans, very, again, this would be very, very much in the future that the YMCA has, you know, and given that we have to, anytime the city or the farmer's market uses that parking lot, we have to rent it from AISD. It is not our parking lot. And also, AISD, we've had several conversations with the Director of Real Estate, and, you know, they're aware that that is not, specifically those two most northern lots, not, you know, I think there's always going to have to be parking at Burger for athletic events. But the only time those two northern lots are filled for them is graduation. So those two lots specifically are not highest and best used. But as we all know, AISD is in not great financial shape, so I don't think anything is going to be happening anytime soon.
I have to admit, I, I walked on the trails at Upper Cougar Creek. I know you're not supposed to, but everyone else seemed to be doing it. So, and those paths are. What's that?
Did you leave footprints?
Nope, nope. But how, how wide are those paths? How, how wide are those trails?
Ten feet.
Those are ten feet, those are, those are, I, I feel like they're almost too wide. They're fine, they're fine. But so, just thinking that fourteen, and I measured the current, where the farmer's market currently is, that's fourteen feet. I brought it up on the, so I, just like the, this, the size and the number of trails that are built into this just seems a lot. You know, I, I like, I like the home for the farmer's market and Art Fest and stuff. I could probably scale down much of the trails. That's, that's just my feeling about it. And also, I don't know who is going to come through that northeast section. I guess maybe the apartments. I know who was mostly going to use that trail, actually, but I won't bring it up.
I will say the internal trails that you see kind of in the middle of the loop would be mown so that they wouldn't have DG, it would just be kind of like a more natural path, similar to what's already there where the city comes and mows it. So this is just to kind of provide an experience that's like a little bit more natural feeling that you're kind of surrounded by nature if you go through the middle areas. So that would be a mown path, so less, less formal than what you see along, along the edges with a decomposed granite path.
Yeah, but even ten feet out, like, if I take what is over in Upper Cougar Creek and imagine what's currently in there, it just feels kind of like, I know, I know this is like the first meeting of probably a bunch, but now I'm going to say that they should be smaller, but then also ask, how do you do load-in for Art Fest? If you're going to have, in like the third side, can you bring the third side up? Yeah, like how, because currently we have this.
Right, so, so one of the things for the farmer's market, oh, sorry.
No, sorry, your mic isn't.
The farmer's market, we talked about, and I don't know what their feedback was, for them to be able to, on the Burger side, pull up to that median, so they, they could have their trucks there and be right there where their booth is. For people who need to move in, bring their equipment in, they can come through the circle, drop off there with their wagons and take their tent and stuff to their space. Or if they're coming in, if, if you go all the way up past where the pickleball is, all of that, then they could load in from the ramp over there on the north side of that parking lot.
Currently for Art Fest, not that many people have wagon, they just drive up next to it.
Because we offer that, but I do a lot of shows, and, and I've had to take wagons four blocks to put with my tents and everything to set up. So it's not uncommon.
Okay.
We're just really lucky that we have that big, huge parking lot and people can pull their car right up. Very few places where they have art festivals or even the artisan markets have that capability.
But on, on hot Art Fest days, vendors would probably like to be not on the asphalt.
Yes.
And prefer to be, you know, in, in shade.
Green space.
In green space.
So probably the last thing I'd say is, I, I love the idea of the farmer's market and Art Fest having just like a home, just something that is a little bit easier to kind of fall into. It, it like makes me really excited to see that rendering where you're kind of at the, the gathering part and the gathering space, just looking up at it. I'd probably scale back some things just initially and do lighter touch on most of it, but we're clawing back some asphalt. I don't know, I'm pretty excited about it.
Just a couple of other notes. I know that, another thing that we talked about with staff and was amended, food trucks, right? You know, there are currently food trucks that park on Master Charge in Horgan. There's, obviously, Art Fest has food trucks, and where would they be located? You know, the idea being that we'd use the Burger Center parking lot to continue to use that space, possibly along the, the southern end of the triangle, right? Where they could line up next to the electrical. So there's, we'd have to consider that, too, but if we don't have access to the parking lot, where do those, you know, food trucks go in, in that case? Because that's going to be something that is an amenity that we're going to include. The other thing I was going to just highlight, and, and we, and Councilor Burrell, you mentioned this, too, but, you know, essentially what we're talking about is, is cutting MSG Horgan off at that southern, southwest corner and making it about half the length that it is now, maybe about two-thirds the length that it is now. But what we really didn't get into much detail about is that the, the, the street there is very wide. So Master Charge in Horgan is a, is a, it's two lanes, but it's, it's like a four-lane, you know, street if you really, you know, had to do that. And so one of the things that's, you can see here is that, number one, that's where street parking is proposed, but it's also going to be a shared-use path that goes all the way down to Jones. And so the idea that's, that's presented here is that that's actually going to narrow that street down because you're going to reclaim some of it for the trail, and you're going to have side, you know, side parking. And I think this is where it's important to get some feedback from the elementary school because right now that's a heavily utilized area during drop-off and pickup. And people often, you know, park on both sides of the street, and if we're narrowing it, obviously, it'll kind of have to be considered about what, what that impact might have. Not that it's not a, something we still wouldn't want to do because I think having a shared-use path is a really great idea, right? You know, to get people off of the road who want to commute to the farmer's market in alternative ways. You know, to get people off of the road who wanna commute to the farmer's market in alternative ways. But that's just another note that I think is another engagement point with the elementary school is important as we move forward with any kind of concept on changes to Master Charge in Oregon. Councilor Rose, oh, sorry. Mayor Portem, because you haven't had a chance to speak yet, then we'll go back to the Councilor's.
I'm looking at this plan and, you know, I sort of like the idea that this is a smorgasbord of things we can do, a lot like we do with the comprehensive plan and the, the Parks and Open Space Plan. But, what's kind of bothering me here is, we went and got public feedback. The public was, you know, was presented with three alternatives. Pick number one. And what I see here is something that looks a lot like number two. And that kind of bothers me, 'cause that is not what the citizens said that they wanted. And I think a lot of this is things that we may or may not wanna do in the future. So it would seem to me it would be a good idea, and, and one of the comments that was, uh, was on Engagement HQ, I think is, is very apt, which is, there are parts of this I think we should really do. The pickleball court, the pavilion, um, the entrance pass, the, the sis, water cisterns, the, um, the portable toilets. The rest I think is optional, possibly not needed, expensive, and more than what the citizens asked for. And I think maybe we should think about ways where we scale this back or divide it into potential phases where we consider what we wanna do at each phase. There are other parts of this that I think we should reconsider. For example, the overflow parking. I know AISD has a, a number of different plans that they would like to do. They're not gonna have the budget to do these things anytime in the near future. I mean, we all kind of know that. We're also entering in a period where economically, things look very uncertain and very volatile. And lots of development isn't gonna happen, lots of growth probably isn't gonna happen. And this seems to me like it's too much. And I think we should talk about ways where maybe we scale back and scale back the cost of this. There are other things where, I take my dog to walk in the uplands. It's a very nice space. I don't think we need to plant a bunch of additional shade trees, especially if we wanna do more prairie restoration, right? You can have the shade or you can have prairie restoration, but you can't have both those things together. That's another way to cut down some of the potential costs here. I mean, I like this. I like the whole concept of it. I think it's maybe more than we can or should do at this time.
And just so I have it clear, you, the items that you would prioritize would be things like the cisterns, the shaded structure, right? Some sort of pavilion, maybe not the, the same designer configuration. And I think you mentioned pickleball too as being another thing, because the community has given feedback saying that they want a space for that.
The things that citizens are asking.
Right, okay.
Right?
Yeah, I just, because I, I think, I just wanna make sure I'm getting a feedback as we go forward and any kind of like-
I understand we wanna take the concerns of other stakeholders, like the SFC and like AISD, but I think our citizens come first. And it's pretty clear, it's been pretty clear over ten years, what they want, which is, we wanna preserve the uplands, we wanna do some minimal development on it, but not too much. I think that's been a consistent message for a long time, and I think we should pay attention to that.
Councilor Rose Garden and then Councilor Medicas.
I wondered about that also. So I took pictures the night we were doing that, and I'm going back and looking at my pictures, and you are correct. The one that had the most dots on it was one million, two hundred and some thirty-two thousand dollars. And I've got it up right now. So, we're now at three million, because we're, we're taking, uh, plan from two and plan from one and putting it together. And then my other questions are, uh, I see two walking paths, one coming off of Highway seventy-one, one going down towards Jones off the bottom. And that tells me that there's not a fence there, and if there's not a fence, I worry about security. I worry about the park staying clean. Just this morning, when I walked this property, we encountered a unhoused person who had his pants below his, uh, bottom and was struggling with a shopping cart and all his stuff. And so, I worry about this area constantly having issues because they come right down Highway seventy-one with their shopping carts. I also worry about the benches and the picnic tables. If you have a bench that is long enough for someone to sleep on, they will sleep on it. So you have to have an arm in the middle. If you have picnic tables that have long seating, same thing. They will sleep on it. They will sleep on the table, they will sleep on the bench, trust me. So you're there again, you have to limit the seating to like two spots at, 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 um, at a table. You have two spots, they have, they make tables where they're two, 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 two. So you have four sides to the table. They can't sleep on it that way. It's more square versus rectangle. Then, uh, let's see. My note says what I would really like is to do a walkthrough with the uplands with onion skin imaging. So I'd love to see from Google Earth exactly what it looks like right now and then exactly what you're bringing to a schematic plan and see that overlay and see what happens. Because there's a beautiful, beautiful amount of trees on the south side next to the elementary school where the seventy-two future parking spots you're talking about, which I really believe that needs to be eroded. Just thick right there with trees and thick with underbrush. And I love the way it looks right now. In other words, leave it alone. The minute you clean underneath and just have the canopy of the trees, it just, it loses something. And yes, on the backside where it goes against condos and the electric supply, that is thick with trees, thick with underbrush. You can hardly see the condos, and I love the way that is compared to, once you clean it up, then you see through it. Next question is, with all the tents sitting in that half horseshoe, boy, they've, yes, others have had, their vendors have to struggle and go four blocks in order to do that. Why would they want to change what they have right now when it's so convenient? So we would make it more difficult for some of them versus how convenient the majority of them have it right now. And I will come back to some questions later and let someone else talk.
Councilor Medicas.
So, vendor load in, I'll, I'll address that first. One of the big complaints we get about being on the blacktop is the heat. And, um, and then we had Tar Fest one year because they did-
Repaving.
Repave, well, they didn't really repave, they just took all the places where it's cracking and, and did crack and seal, and then it was hot as all get out and that became stuck on animals' feet, people's feet, our dancers got their shoes ruined. It's much more pleasant for, as a vendor, to be on a grassy area, in a treed area where there's some shade and you're not like on a blacktop. Yes, it's really convenient to load in, I will admit that. But, um, you know, for spending the whole day out there, that gets really, really hot. And so, we've had people, we've had vendors actually end up in the emergency tent because of the heat. So being off that blacktop and being on a grassy area with some shade would be much better. And, or even in the pavilion. And maybe what we look at first is doing the pavilion. I mean, that's our farmer's market, that's, um, and, and maybe we don't need to do, we can have picnic tables under there until it grows to such a, a point where we wanna put the rest of it out there and, and do the loop. So that's an option too. I, I think that's the one thing we've talked about for years and years and years is having some kind of a covered pavilion where we could have the farmer's market and other events, other art events. We could have National Light Out over there, we could have, um, you know, artisan markets there on a regular basis to bring traffic into our city. So, for me, that's like the first phase to me would be doing the pavilion. And then maybe phase two, we see how that goes. If, if the pavilion fills up and farmer's market and they get ninety vendors, then maybe we look at, uh, doing the circle, the half circle.
Thank you once again, Karen, for making the point I was trying to make, making it more succinctly.
But all the other trails, I think they're natural, like they're just mown. All of that, right?
The pavilion is definitely the most expensive piece. Um, it's, like, with its current size, it's estimated to be, and I guess with prices as they are now, with steel and things, you know, estimated to be one million dollars. But then that also requires an architect. The DG path, so these are the widest DG paths here, that makes the D. That has to be the fourteen feet that Councilmember Johnson mentioned. But all of the rest are, you know, the, just the ADA compliant, ten feet. But again, let me go back to this slide. And Caroline can speak more to this, but that is probably the least expensive part of the project because we would, we would do all of this work in-house, so we would just be paying for, for the materials. I mean, yes, labor is included because it's the city labor, but we have, um, our staff has been, our staff has been, um, they're gonna have a lot of, a lot of experience building, building paths at this point, once they're done with the, um,
And the pavilion to me is the most important, I mean, that-
Right.
And, and we put a million dollars of surplus into water rebates that is, we haven't really been able to use much of it, our residents aren't really using it. So, we did that one year. So a million dollars is not a lot of money for something that would increase the quality of life and offer other opportunities here in our city, in this side of our town, anyway.
All right, Councilor Rose Garden, you wanna go back to your, your questions?
Is it possible to go through the uplands, spray paint where you're proposing different things so we can physically walk it and see? And then like you're, you're driving and you're parking for seventy-two spots? I just can't believe you could do seventy-two cars right there. The pavilion, uh, you show the measurement of how wide it is and then the walking space of fourteen feet in the middle. That's great, but I didn't realize that, that Ernest Roble, MSG Bob Oregon Trail is that wide to accommodate all that plus putting trees in there.
Yeah, yeah, it's even wider. It's about forty-five feet wide. But I, I like that suggestion. I think it would absolutely be possible and we could, we could take tape and do it, you know, kind of the flagging tape, and that would help maybe conceive of the space a little bit more. And then, um, for your question about taking out trees in the siding of some of the paths, we're, we were very, very careful and I'd be happy to do that overlay with the Google Earth to, to site paths. And, and the, the loop, the loop path as well does not interfere significantly with any trees or any larger trees. So, just, it's hard to see because, you know, you don't have the before and after, but that was, of course, a major consideration of ours, is people who wanna conserve the natural assets of the space.
Yeah, I agree.
Carrie, do you know, would there be, I don't know if we talked about this. I mean, at least, not on this portion, there would just be trees planted, 'cause this is just an existing road. This is like a dirt road right down here.
Yeah.
Would there be any trees taken out with any of these? Maybe possibly a few?
Possibly a few smaller ones. I, I would like to go back and double check before I speak to any specific number.
Right, right. But there wasn't, it would be very few?
Yes.
Given this, this plan?
Yes.
Councilor Rose Garden?
Well, we're getting ready for the, uh, art festival and so everything is mowed. You can't see where the trails were, or should I say, where the trails used to be. It's now green and everything else is brown where it's mowed because it was so tall that the underbrush of the grassy area was brown. But it's hard to know the detail if it matches this exactly. So yes, it would be really nice to kind of spray paint it off and say, okay, this is where we're considering this and so on. Also, uh, I would ask Kyle, how much do we spend every year in budget for the farmer's market? I tried finding it and it'll take me way too long to find it.
It's several different line items. Let me, do you want an exact number?
It's, it's about twenty-five thousand. I can get the exact.
Plus marketing.
Now that includes the hot, that includes the hot fund grant, the general fund grant, which the general fund grant pretty much just pays for half of the year of TDS, the toilet service. And then there are some in-kind donations because we, we pay for, we rent the, uh, we rent the parking lot, so.
Right, we rent the parking lot, we pay for the, the porta potties. We, uh-
Half of the, half of the year.
Give them funds for marketing.
Correct.
And then this is for a farmer's market to help them. Then we're talking about building a pavilion to get them out of the shade. They still have to bring their own tents. So it starts to add up and I start hearing cha-ching, cha-ching to help the farmers. And I'm going, wouldn't we be better off if we just gave them the money and got the produce directly versus having to spend all this money in order to go through this process of getting the produce? And I've said this before, thank you.
Hold on. We'll, we'll give a chance for public comments in just a second. Council, any other questions before I open it up for public comments?
I'll wait for another one.
All right, this time I'd invite members of the public to step out of the podium and, um, and give a comment if they wish to. And if you, and if you could, when you're speaking, state your name so that we, uh, have that for the residents at home as well.
Hello, it's Maya Adra, SFC Farmer's Market Operations Manager. First, I have a question first. When you said that there's, when you showed the big events, is that, that the Art Fest is going to happen side by side with the, with the farmer's market? Because now at the time being, what we have is that we are displaced when the Art Fest is happening to AISD. So would that take into a consideration that both events are happening at the same time?
So, we did discuss that. And one of the ideas would be that they could take place at the same time, that now the, the farmer's market would not be under the pavilion at that time, they'd probably be on that upper path so that if they needed to leave at one o'clock, they could leave at one o'clock.
Okay, okay. Now, the intermission that I'm taking is that, you know, um, the farmer's market, you know, it's, it's, um, the Sunset Valley is growing and it's a place for farmers to come and sell their produce. And it is important, so when we, we talked about the, the elements of what is important for us as a farmer's market, we considered climate change and that in the future, we're gonna see more freeze, more wind, uh, more rain. So a shaded structure will definitely help a lot on this because now the farmer's market is directly affected by weather. When the weather is, when it's rainy, you see like barely anyone showing at the market and the vendors are there, but they're not making sales. And so the pavilion will help them, a shaded structure will help them make more cons, like kind of a, like a consistent sale and the regulars will be able to come to the market even when the weather is bad. So that was one of the things that we talked about. It is an important place to market their produce and to find, and, and that helps, you know, with their, with their farming, with the farming sector. I know it's, it's really nice to give them money to plant more. It's, it's actually, I wish we have that. We also talked about, uh, funding. So we would like to help at, at SFC. And unfortunately, now federal funds are frozen, we can't do anything. FAMP is not opened yet. But I've looked at other farmer's market that had a growth and expansion, um, in other states, in the United States. And basically, they were through private, um, sponsorships or donations. So we, we have a development team and they're really excellent. And we're gonna see if we can use their help, present this, and then see if we can do, raise some donations and help with the funding of the plan, because we really love it. It's just gonna really transform the Sunset Valley Farmer's Market and the whole scene of the farmer's market in, in Austin. It's gonna be an attraction. And the reason also why we talked about the playground is that the demographics have changed. Over the past two years, we've seen a lot of families flocking to the farmer's market lately. Mainly we see families with, with kids and children. And these are families and parents instilling the culture of going to the farmer's market to get your produce and buy locally produced, locally produced, um, um, food. So, um, definitely, I've, I've heard from a lot of vendors, we had some blocks before I joined SFC and kids love those blocks. They love to come and play in a certain area. So we talked about also this. We'll try our best to see how much we can raise and we hope we can. We, we don't know. I mean, we'll, I'm not the expert in raising money. We have our department and we'll try our best to do this. We'll connect Matt with our development team and we'll see how much we can. We'll connect Matt with our development team and we'll see how much we can, we can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. I just want to kind of comment about process because that's the thing I always think about. And one of the reasons we started using consultants was, and, and I think staff started getting excited about consultants is that it was nice to not fight so much, you know, that we were paying people to come up with the community's idea. And so, one of the things that I heard really strongly was how people liked the price tag 1.1 million dollars. And, and that was a big theme, that people could get behind and, and they did like the minimum. So, I just think we should be careful that we don't hit people with bait and switch kinds of things. So, I, I just want to say that was a feature that I heard a lot. And, and I'm not opposed to adding some of these things, but I just want to be aware of that because people all said, and we like the 1.1 million, I mean, that, that was a thing that I heard a consensus around and there was a lot of dots on that plan. And so, I just want us to be aware of that. I'm not saying we shouldn't go a little further for some things that, that matter, but I think we should do it carefully. I agree with a lot of the things that Mayor Prosem said about the economy and things that are happening. I am concerned about if we make overflow parking on the north, that it just becomes the monastery parking lot and we always have parking there and, you know, it just, it ruins the experience to me to put a parking lot there. I'm not excited about a parking lot there. I do think we have to be careful because I could see why AISD would want to develop that, especially in this climate. And the why is very expansive and I've watched them shoot up all over town. I used to be at the YWCA for like 10, 12, 13 years, and so, as staff. And I saw a lot of the way their development went, so that's, that's a concern to me about that we have parking. Mostly, I want it to be natural so that, and, and when you put a big structure up, I would like it to feel organic, you know, because right now you go there and you do have a natural experience. And I don't want to lose that. I appreciate all the things that Councilmember Rosenbaum said because you go there and it's blocked, you know, you, you, and when we watched them do a cleaning out to make it more natural over at San Marcos, it destroyed San Marcos, it destroyed the feeling of San Marcos. I know it was environmentally the right thing to do, but I kind of even want to do a slow environmental thing because I would want to preserve the edges because it's not in my lifetime that it's gonna come back, you know, where it feels like it's nature. So, even as we make it more done, I want to preserve the edges. I don't want to see, just be, I, just because we made it prairie, I still don't want to see the apartment complex. That ruins my experience. And if you put a parking lot there, I don't want to see that parking lot there. So, I would say preserve the edges even though you're trying to make it natural. Even, even so, because when you go down to, to San Marcos, all I hear is I-35 now. I used to go down there and I was just gone and I went there all the time. That, that was like my, my home away from home, I had a friend from San Antonio, we'd meet there. And now, if you go down there, it's 35 and it's 35 all over the place. And, and since we do have so much noise, I just want to be really careful that we preserve the natural thing. I think we should do as little as we need to do and I think we should stage it. And that, that's just sort of my sense of how to move forward, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Burton Pearson and Rudy, I'm sorry that you saw me over there the other day with my shopping cart. The,
And the pants.
Basically, I'm on the Planning and Environmental Committee and I'm on the Prairie Restoration Subcommittee. I have a PhD in Ecology and Evolutionary Biology from the University of Texas when that program was the number one in the nation. I'm quite proud of that, it was very difficult to do mainly because of the difficult politics at universities. What I wanted to talk here about a couple of things. The PNE Committee, which now is going to be renamed the Parks and Environment Committee, still with its major function of informing you all about environmental matters, which, which this is. We have set aside a date of May 8th in order to, if necessary, review this schematic that's being presented tonight because that committee has not yet, even in spite of the charge to inform you all, we have not yet seen that schematic as a committee. And I don't know what, something, whether it was an agenda problem or what, we have not seen that yet. Basically, it's a very difficult situation here because most people do not understand the depth of the current crisis that we're facing in the world, in the United States and everywhere in terms of the biodiversity crisis. Most people do not know that Gene Hackman's wife died of a direct, as a direct result to the biodiversity crisis because she died of Hunter Virus. And the Smithsonian scientists have said that basically climate change drove out some of the key predators, allowed all these rodents to come in, the rodents poop out the virus, the virus gets in the dust. When you sweep the dust, you breathe in the virus. It's a hemorrhagic virus that causes you to bleed out from the inside, it's not very pleasant. I'm sure it's, in fact, they found out now it's even more prevalent in that area of the country than, than what, what they had previously thought. So, you can't hear from the butterflies, you can't hear from the birds, you can't hear from the grass, you can't hear from the microorganisms, so you have to hear from people who know about those things and really try to, to guide the situation. Prairie is the most, one of the most diverse habitats in the world. It rivals that of the rainforest and we have basically less than 1% of it left at this point. So, with that in mind, I want to say that most of the people of Sunset Valley, when we did a really, when we were getting ready to do our comprehensive plan, we had a very strong survey done of people by Lisa Versace. In that survey, most of the people said what to do with open space was leave it alone or rewild it. And with that in mind, when we had the meeting here to talk about the schematic plans, most of the people that came to that meeting preferred Plan Number One and I agree with Charles that this schematic that's presented is mostly Plan Number Two, including that crescent for extra tents. I don't know how, why that would need to be, but it, it was kind of startling. I'm not sure how, how much acreage would it take if we had one of those overflow events and actually, you know, mowed and made room for all those tents on all those paths that you talked about. What I would like to see if we could maybe, what can I, this, if you have to have overflow, I'd recommend some of it could just go this way in terms of tents, as this is already degraded habitat, I believe. And I do think we need to be flexible, we certainly wanted that night, I remember, to support the farmer's market because that's why we were willing to put this covered pavilion in here. But, but this is something that the people did not vote for and did not want on that night. They had a choice of plan too, which included this crescent, and they did not, they did not vote for that. Now, I know there are other stakeholders, but we do, as Charles suggested from somebody who made a comment that, you know, the stakeholders don't trump the residents who own the property. So, there are things I will suggest now quickly, it's just this. I would like to eliminate the crescent from the plan, at least for now. Reduce the gathering space instead of about 13 to 14 tables, bring it down to about four tables. I would like to eliminate the kids' play area, just simply because in Sunset Valley, we've donated other open space to, to play areas now in Sunset Valley, one in the backyard, right behind this building, and one over at docks. I'd like to locate the bandstand closer to the loading dock to make it easier for the band to move their equipment. I've been a drummer and I will suggest that I'd like it closer to the loading dock, I mean closer, yeah. Item eight on this plan. I don't think there's any need at this point to spend any funds for overflow parking. Overflow parking, and if you're gonna keep that area mowed, that certainly will degrade that habitat to have that area mowed. And I don't know what, between us and AISD, if there's a problem with that, but it looks to me like we're constantly able to park over there. Now, I know there are some days when, you know, graduation, et cetera, when we can't park over there and we usually move the farmer's market, which I'm sure is super inconvenient, over in front of Home Depot over there. And so that's kind of a, a situation there. The pickleball courts, if we're gonna put them on there, let's, let's get them so that they stay on the impervious cover as much as possible. Maybe if they're not side by side, could they be end to end in some way that we could keep them on the impervious cover? And there really should be no additional trees planted on the uplands. The upland habitat, to a large part, is basically open prairie, planting trees. It actually degrades open prairie and it, and it costs us money to do that, so we're, we're paying money to degrade the habitat. If you go to the Lady Bird Johnson Wildflower Center, you'll notice that the trails are low, you know, the prairie areas are completely unshaded. And that way you get to experience prairie when you're on those trails and that's, that's the purpose of those trails, to do that. So, that's everything I have to say, I probably used my four minutes.
Thank you. Maybe I'll switch to speaker this time?
Punam Sudhu and we live on Oakdale Drive. Matt, how much are we paying for the farmer's market per annum? Did you say 30,000?
Yeah, I, I have to get the exact number, I'm sorry, I haven't looked it up. Kyle, did you get it? It's several different line items, it's the hot fund grant, then there's the, the general fund, which is 10K. What's the hot fund, it was 20?
25,000.
Yeah, for the branding.
Fine, let's go, let's go with 25,000.
Well, it's around, it's around 40,000 altogether, including the rent, well, the Burger Center. They got a little bit more on their hot funds, but it's not all from the general fund.
And you also said that, you know, you did some analysis and we'll be spending about 40,000 per annum on maintenance of the structure that comes up. So, basically, on a cost benefit.
On the park.
On the park, yes. So, if you do a cost benefit, then what it costs to rent from Burger Center is what it's going to cost you to maintain the structure that's coming up. And because I volunteer in budget and finance, I'm looking at the cost benefit. But I think I really liked what Melissa said, that, you know, as little as we need to do and to stage it, given the point that Charles Young made about the economy. And also the fact that almost everyone wanted the 1 million version, where we are now going to 3.5 plus because the paths are still going to be done by city and then you're looking at maintenance as another add-on. So, I don't know if the city's in a position to commit something of the order of 4 million at this point. So, just to reiterate what Charles Young also said about the economy and I think Karen reiterated that point, maybe in a phased manner to begin with, it might be a good idea to commit to, you know, as little as we need to do, keeping all the feedback that's been received. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe I'll switch to speaker this time before going back?
Just in regards to the differences between the initial three concept proposed plans. So, the Concept One plan did not have a pavilion. It did not have a pickleball court. So, just keep that in mind when you're thinking about the differences between the three and why that one was the lowest in cost, it's because it did not have the pavilion or the pickleball courts. So, that's the big difference considering that the pavilion is about a million dollars and the pickleball court, I don't have the number right up with, with me right now.
It's about 150K with the lights, electrical.
Yes, so, so that's the difference. And I think we're a firm that is so firmly committed to community engagement and to hearing the needs of the community and reflecting that in our design. And it, it makes me sad to hear that y'all don't feel that way and I want you to know that we're really committed to reaching a point here where everybody is excited about this design and feels that their voices are heard, so I, I'm taking everything that you're saying and I appreciate your feedback and I, I'm confident that we will find a place of mutual agreement on this design and thank you.
Thank you. And I, and I'll echo again, just I think that you guys have been very responsive to both the community and to staff, to myself with regards to the feedback and I'm sure that the feedback that we're getting tonight is also gonna be something that we're responding to and making sure that I, that, you know, we work together if we do decide to go forward with anything. I do think, you know, echoing what I've heard or sort of,
I think that's yours, yeah.
You know, I, I, I thank you for pointing out that, you know, the price for that first concept did not include some of the features I think people are prioritizing now, right? You know, having a shaded or covered structure, potentially a pickleball court. And so this is naturally gonna drive up the cost, but I'm also making, you know, making sure that, listening to the feedback we've had is that this is something that we want to approach in phases because of all the outside factors, but also just the minimal impact as we go forward. So, I think that's one thing that council can give as far as possible direction with this is that, you know, maybe there's another opportunity to either have committees engage in this as a next step or have Mend and the count, and staff, of, of course Mend is at the end of this contract, so that would also be some discussion about how much more iterations do we want to go for or do we want staff to work on something, you know, and, and bring something back. But I also just want to emphasize that, you know, it's up to us, it's up to you about what we do next with this. I think that Mend has done an excellent job in bringing the ideas to a point where council can now respond to it and potentially other responses that the residents have. I also want to emphasize that this is not something that we are planning on executing on immediately or anytime in the near future, as presented in the backup in the cover page. The proposal that staff and I have, you know, are recommending is that if we go forward with this, it would be part of the next budget to include a schematic or a construction document that takes us to a point where we can begin construction. And then the actual building would happen during the next CIP phase, which would start the year after that and potentially extend over the next three or four years. And so, if we phase this, it would be, you know, potentially on a, you know, we could do early, early things early, but if, you know, if we're talking about this whole site plan, I wouldn't envision that we'd be doing this and raising 3.5 million dollars in the next year, it'd be spaced out over multiple years and we would want to come up for funding solutions for that like we've done with other big projects like the City Hall facilities where we saved up money ahead of time or we looked for alternatives. And so, I just want to also emphasize that too for residents might be listening, that in my mind, we would want to focus on the priorities and we want to say, how can we get that cost to that point? I do want to make sure that we are considerate of all the, the feedback in terms of minimizing the impact, but also just acknowledge that this is not something that we can start construction on next year and we'd have to raise funds for in that immediate timeframe. Okay, so with that, we'll reopen for public comments in just a few minutes. I do want to give council a chance to provide additional discussion. Councilor Rosenbaum, then Councilor Metekis?
I move that we table this until after the art fest because they're right now preparing the area for the art fest, for the built area, they've already got that fenced. And that we, when we do go back to this, that we have it marked off as to where you're planning on doing this, the archway, how far it extends out, where the gathering area is, the play area and so on, with spray paint that is, of course, water soluble, et cetera.
Can I ask, so the, the reasoning for us, just to kind of explain, to make that loop was to add additional capacity to the farmer's market, right? So, if you were to have all of the farmer's market tents underneath the pavilion, as we're showing it now, it's about 42, which is less capacity actually that they have right now. So, the reason why that, So the reason why that was added was to kind of create an ability for the farmer's market to really expand as it grows, because, you know, we're investing in this. It's really going to, as Maya has said, be an attraction for people, and people are gonna want to come here, and so they will very quickly outgrow that pavilion space. So that was the reasoning to add that kind of section of the D, the arch, not because we liked that best and we didn't want to listen to the community. That was the reasoning. And so what I'm curious to hear from you guys, just in a little bit more specificity, is what's the hesitation there? And is it because you don't want to have that capacity, or is it just simply the design and you want to see that laid out a little bit differently? That's, I'm sorry to get into the details, I just want to understand where it's coming from, so that we can move forward with a different way to approach that.
From what I heard, it's accessibility to the tents and less intrusion onto the green space that is right now green space. So why not put the overflow of tents right back where they are, right now? Put it back on the triangle.
That's an option. It wouldn't allow for as much, and it wouldn't be kind of like that loop, right? It would just spit you out in the parking lot again. But that's an option.
Because you already got crushed granite walkways right there already.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Why not use that space that we're already using?
Sure.
Eighteen years later, we're still here with a tremendous amount of community input over the years, committee input over the years. I really appreciate the efforts that Mend has done in engaging the community, and I just want to say something about the dots on Plan One, because I was here that night, and I was more interested in Number Three, which had the pavilion on it. And I talked to a lot of people around that table. Because a lot of people were focused on the one that was, because it was cheaper, lower price, we took our notes from Three and put them on Number One. So I just want to make it clear that Number One wasn't just strictly what you presented in Number One, it was a combination of what we were bringing from Three to Two to One, because that seemed to be where most people were gathering. So I just want that to be clear, that that is not cut and dry, just straight Number One. So nothing that you guys did, we just took our sticky notes and went walking.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other thing, I think, is the importance of the farmer's market. We've supported the farmer's market for many years to bring people to our community. That was, you know, one of the big things. We've always, I've always heard we want to make it a more robust farmer's market, more of a destination, and I believe that, well, I support that, Number One. But Number Two, the pavilion is not just about the farmer's market. The pavilion is about our community and the quality of life in our community, and having a place, a gathering place, where that's accessible, Number One. It's not in the middle of the greenbelt, which a lot of us can't walk anymore, but it's easy to get to, and we can, Arts Commission has wanted to have a place to do artisan markets on a regular basis. We could have artisan markets on Sundays, the last Sunday of the month there. That brings more people to our community. So there's a lot of things that we could do with a covered pavilion that are on top of the farmer's market, which I totally support, and I think this would enhance the farmer's market and turn it into what we envisioned when we talked several years ago about the funding. And that's all. Carolyn?
I just want to follow up on what Councilmember Medicas said. So I pulled up the comments from that event, the community engagement, and the comment says, "On Plaza, on Option One," these are the comments that were given. "Pavilion-type structure on existing pavement, farmer's market to use existing parking lot. Include permanent shade structure. Add a permanent shade structure. Make a cheaper version of this plan. We're already building a children's area. I do like the conversion of upper part of MSG Horgan Drive. Pit hole ball court in the pavilion. Add the tree deck. I like the boulevard." Let me keep going down. "Concept of the market with the pavilion covering the vendors and walkways. Create a loop here. Keep this path," and they were pointing to the triangle. "Create a loop with shade. Potential restroom up here, too, or something to bring people to this, to the pavilion, to the triangle. Put pavilion here up here." "I love this location, but add a shade structure, shade structure over the road." So that is the comments that were actually on Plaza, Number One option.
Yeah, so there was a lot of discussion that night about loops, and then loops are actually beneficial in a farmer's market. And yeah, we could, you could shift the design, so rather than, you know, so obviously the main path is here, it could be like it was shown on Concept One, utilizing, but I think the...
Can you go back to Concept One?
Yeah.
There was loops there, too.
People seem to like loops.
Like a half-circle shape, it was like a harp shape.
Yeah.
Here, pretend.
First, I wanted to say, when I saw this, this is, you know, like I said, this is a smorgasbord of all the things we can do, and I thought you guys did an excellent job on it, balancing out what you heard from the community, what you heard from the farmer's market from here with the AISD. So if what I said came across as critical of that, I'm sorry, that was not intended. But I did want to make the point that, you know, we had this immediate citizen feedback, and this is what they wanted. And my understanding of that feedback was that people wanted a pavilion. And I agree with all the things that Councilmember Medicas said, that it is an enhancement to the community. I just don't think we need to do all of this. There are, for example, I don't think, maybe someday we need the overflow parking, but leave it follow. Leave it the way it is until the point comes up where we actually are actually going to need it, because I think there's a very good chance that we never will. I don't think we need to build another children's playground, because we have several of those. We may sometime in the future, if the farmer's market really grows, we should be prepared to support that. I love the farmer's market, I know a lot of people in the community do. But what I do for a living is software development, and we have an acronym that we have called YAGNY, which means you ain't going to need it. And it's a reminder to not do more than you need to do anticipating what's going to happen in the future, because the future is hard to predict. But I think there are, there is definitely a subset of these things that we should do that will enhance the community greatly, that are what people want. And it's just a question of, what are the details? What do we want to do? What do we not want to do? But I think we should move forward with this, you know, and have that discussion about exactly what we want to do in this, and how we want to phase it.
Councilor Brill?
Yeah, the, yeah, I appreciate the work as well. I think the, I think the concept does, at least in my mind, a great balancing act of trying to develop the property while still trying to maintain the ecosystem that's there. I think, I mean, I guess I have a little different view about the play area, because the play area here, the other two playgrounds don't really fit into my equation, because what this play area is, is somebody's going to show up at this market and go shopping. They're not going to send their kid over to docks while they go shopping here. This is something for the kids, for the fifteen, twenty minutes, half hour, hour, however long they're there, it gives an outlet for the kids to do something besides just follow their parents. So from my perspective, I think it's a, having, the playground, I think, is a real asset. I mean, again, it's not a, you know, it's not a massive structure, and frankly, I don't think it's that big an expense even to, you know, it's not, it's basically something for the kids to do while their parents are at the market. So I think that's a, to me, that struck me as a really good idea. The other thing, I guess, as well, is I think if the council feels that there's enough of a concept with this plan to keep talking, I guess I'd really like to hear officially, I guess, from planning and environmental, and also from Public Works to get those perspectives as well, in terms of the, in terms of their representative interest, Public Works especially in terms of perhaps maybe value engineering the concept, as well as hearing what the environmental aspects impacts would be as well. And I think that's something that could happen, you know, in the next month or two.
Councilor Johnson?
As far as scaling this down, I mean, if you took all of the trails and just took them off and just like left it natural, I'm on board. I mean, I love how kind of wild it is in there. I kind of like, I kind of like the loop, it gives this kind of like, kind of wrapping your arms around this communal area, and if there's anything we can do to improve the soil conditions up in the triangle, I mean, that farmer's market, the current location, two ninety is right there, and it is a little loud, and, you know, you just see these cars whizzing by. And so, I don't know, just putting overflow tents back up over there kind of seems like, we're spending all this money to kind of get them away, and then we end up just putting them back there anyway, then I'd probably prefer to just try to make the triangle, like bring it back to life or whatever. As far as playgrounds, I mean, if we only had so much money for whatever playgrounds, I don't know how many people are going to use this one, honestly. The farmer's market is lousy with kids. People bring them, and maybe we don't need a playground, maybe we just need triple the number of blocks. Do you know that Rose bought those blocks? Which is like amazing, and they are insanely expensive, if I asked her about them. So, and the kids seem to love the blocks, so maybe we just add more blocks. Yeah, they've been gone for a while, right? Maybe we just buy more blocks. Yeah, I was thinking, but maybe every time I went, they just didn't bring them out because they used to be in that...
They got moldy, it would happen.
Yeah.
You know, they just weren't that...
Yeah.
And I've heard that we got... We tried to purchase it, and it was super...
Yeah.
It's not something that is cheap to buy.
Yeah.
And they don't have, they're inspired.
Yeah. Well, it's kind of like a nature build that you can just like put away at the end of the, at the end of the, and it's an unnatural build, I guess. I was going to say, like, the pickleball, that is like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, I'd have to see how many people put the stickers on there. I know people love it, but at some point, it's just like, I want to see actual buy-in from these people that want to play, but that's it.
Other questions or comments from council? Councilman Rosengard?
I'm just going to say this one more time. I always thought a pavilion should be near the retail center, the best spot, because that would keep activity around the retail center. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Medicas?
I just want to say, Carrie and Mend, I think you did a great job, and I actually loved the plan you presented. I would love to do the whole thing. I think for logistically and financially, it'd be better to do it in phases, and I think pavilion is Number One. I think the pickleball court could wait until we have to redo the dam, and then if we lose that pickleball court, then we look at these pickleball courts, and that could be another phase. Maybe the loop is just, is that concrete or crushed granite?
It's crushed granite, yeah.
Crush, the D loop, the curve of the D is crushed granite and would be done in-house. So we would just be, again, buying.
And I really don't have a problem with that as part of Phase One, if we can do that in-house, and then maybe the stuff in the middle, we can do some real simple things for the playground, just some of those wood climbing blocks that are inexpensive and not something that gets moldy. And like we're going to, like we're doing over in Savannah Trail, there's those blocks that go across the creek bed. You could do something like, something really simple and something not really expensive and very organic could be there. I think the bandstand could wait, and the picnic area, you know, maybe you bring the loop in a little closer, and I don't know. But I just love it the way it is, and I wish we could just do it.
Well, and I think the main takeaway that I'm hearing is, a lot of the things that would support a bigger farmer's market can wait until maybe the farmer's market grows and we see that there's a need for that. So something like the bandstand, something like the playground area, and we kind of build the core of the farmer's market area first and then see how it grows from there and do it in phases as things naturally grow, and we watch that happen.
I, just weighing in my own thoughts, is that having a shade structure has been one of the goals, I think, for the farmer's market, for, you know, competitions with Art Fest, getting people off of the blacktop, you know, and going into a space that's more comfortable and, I think, brings a lot more people to those areas, you know, instead of having it out in that open area. I agree that the minimal work, impact that we can have, the better. However, having some sort of space that's built around that pavilion, I think, is critical in terms of like how people spread out at these events. You go to the farmer's market now, it is not just the line of tents, it's the people all over the triangle, you know, trying to like spread out, find a place to enjoy, you know, something they've purchased, or that old ring, you know, where the play blocks were, you know, it's like a big focal point, you know, for families. And so I think having some way of making sure that we create that sense of communal space is very important, and how we do that in a fashion that we still leave a lot of the area as natural as possible, you know, whether we can look at alternatives, like not planting shade trees, because we want to make sure it's just, you know, preserving a lot of the way it is, or we're not putting additional crushed granite trails in those areas, we just leave them as mode paths, and, you know, we're not making them media accessible, we're just saying, you know, we're preserving the space if, you know, there's mode paths here for people to go out there. But I think having that communal space is important. As a father, I really appreciate having a place where kids can go and enjoy themselves, you know, at these kind of events, but it doesn't have to be extravagant. I like the idea of maybe just buying more blocks. I know they're expensive, but it's also one of the things that, you know, our kids have a lot of fun with those when they're available, too. And I really like the idea of just, you know, that utilizing the space as right now as the tents, I think it's a good idea, you know, in the interim, until we discover if there's more growth needed, you know, so if there's a way that we just don't have the overflow going into the property, we just focus on the existing triangle as an area plus a communal gathering space with possible, you know, feedback from council. I think that's what I would like to move forward with. The parking and overflow parking, the trouble that I see is right now is that that essentially is overflow space right now, we use it for construction, right? It's all, it's not, you know, prairie, it's not trees, it's not anything. And so, you know, we have the idea, the option of just leaving it the way it is now, or doing something where we could have overflow parking. I agree that it's not critical at the first stage. I think it's, as long as we have access to burger, you know, that becomes something that we can evaluate, but I don't think anybody's proposing that we, you know, rewild that at this point, because I think there's, you know, there's options there that we want to consider keeping open, and it's not something that, you know, is currently that anyway, right? So I think that's just something that, we don't necessarily need to consider that for the first phases, but I think it's one of those things that, it's, the area that they're talking about right now is not any kind of, you know, prairie or wilderness, it's a construction parking lot, you know?
Right.
So that's just being the case there. Pickleball? I love having the dam there, you know, it's a kind of a fun place to go and enjoy it. I don't know how attractive it is to have that as an amenity. I can see that being a nice thing to have when you can build it in conjunction with this, but for me, it's not a high priority, right? You know, I think that's just a cost that we would look at as a future, you know, future support, if there's growth and we like the space, but for now, it's not a priority for me, it'd be something that we do in later phases. Those are my thoughts. I know we have more folks waiting to make additional public comments, but I also want to make sure, council, before I do that, anything else that you want to say? Councilman Rosengard?
Again, that's seventy-two spaces. Wasn't that supposed to be a future road for the buses to come in behind the elementary school and load and unload, coming up ritz or something?
Well, all of that is speculation, because right now, the AST has told us they don't have any plans for redevelopment of Sunset Valley Elementary. We know that the school is old, it's aging, that, you know, it's likely to be high on the list if they ever do do, you know, a list of schools, but they've told us explicitly they don't have any plans in the immediate future to do that.
And it is just, you know, the dirt road that exists there right now. There would be no, there would be, nothing would be done to it. It's just, we wanted to point out a space that in case Burger Center was ever not available, it was rented out for another event, the market or some other city event... if the market or some other city event was going on, it's like a, some, I don't think overflow is the right word, it's like backup. It's like emergency backup parking if we don't, for whatever reason, have access to Burger. But that's, again, yes, if we don't develop it a roadway. It is just a dirt road right now.
I, I know what it looks like, and I don't know if you guys are understanding what I'm saying is...
I don't, yeah, I don't understand what you're saying.
The conversation has been to get the traffic off of Jones Road, which the residents...
That would require, that would require building, developing Upper Reese and Stadium Drive. Because that's what we're talking about, this, this stadium drive.
For seventy-two parking spaces. That would be a road. Okay.
But that's, that would be a separate CIP project that the council would have to vote on and it would need to go through the process, so.
Thank you.
All right, so, I want to make sure that we get another chance for the public to comment, um, before we go into... But I hope, council, that we do is, is provide direction or clear, you know, concise guidance about the next steps, even if it's just to bring this back as a, as a future item. I also just want to be mindful that as part of the budget process, you know, ideally, we'd have identified what we're gonna be doing as far as any expenditures for the next fiscal year. And, and so I can begin planning with staff what to bring back for consideration for all the committees that look at budget, including, you know, the Planning and Environmental Committee, Budget and Finance, Public Works, which, you know, that could also be part of the direction too. I know Councilmember Burrell, you mentioned that, getting their feedback um, before we finalize, you know, some, some next steps as well, so. With that, I'll open up for additional public comments at this time.
Thank you for your courtesy, Mayor. I appreciate that. I just want to clarify a little bit about loop, because I was one of the people who wrote loop. And so it, it doesn't have to be a D. You could take the existing one, finish it, and then loop it down. Where, where people just walk in a, in a circular-ish fashion. And so, when I said loop, that's kind of what I envisioned, because for one thing, then you're capturing all our different additional backend parking that those people can back into. And so for me, it was leave it like it is, loop it completely, and then loop it down. So, it's kind of like, uh, I don't know, an L basically, but it's still a loop. And so you have all those extra places for people to back up and park like they do now, then you just loop it that way. It's already doing that organically itself right now. You know, they're starting to loop now, because we're getting some of those other people that were over at Barton, um, Barton Creek. I'm starting to see more of those vendors come over here. And so I'm seeing that as it, as it curves already. So, just, that's a loop, to make that L a loop. And so that's what I meant when I said it. And that way, you, you're not taking the natural part. Every time you creep a bigger path over there, it stops feeling natural. So, I wanted to say that. And I also wanted to say, Mayor, we see people playing pickleball over on the basketball court. That's the prime one because it's covered. And so this is going to become a pickleball court unless you sign it that it's not a pickleball court, you know, so. That is, is that what I was hearing from council? It was a question that I wanted clarity on. Because if you have a covered space that's concrete, unless you say, "No pickleball," it's gonna become a pickleball court because the basketball court is, is our, is the current one right now. They go, "We want it because it's shady," and they go play pickleball on that. So, just, just to say, that's, that's something that people should be aware of. Are you gonna put signs that say, "No pickleball"? You know, because it's gonna be pickleball. If, if, if the basketball court is pickleball, that's gonna be fair game for pickleball. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that, you know, they're gonna bring their nets, they're gonna do that. Unless you're gonna enforce that it's not a pickleball space, that to me says, "Pickleball," you know? So, anyway, I, and I agree with, with everybody who said, um, I, I, I would, I would kick the pickleball other one later in, in terms of my staging, um, personally. But, but just, that's still a loop, and pickleball is gonna be in that unless y'all do something about it. Was it a question to me?
Yes. Where is this basketball court?
Just, on, on, at AISD. There's shade over that and they have basketball. And so when we were over there trapped in the rain with our dog, the guy goes, "Can, where's the pickleball?" You know, "We don't play pickleball here." And so we're, we're literally seeing somebody there who's gonna go play pickleball. And we, we're telling about our new pickleball court, and they go, "Is it covered?" And we said, "No, it's not covered." And they said, "Well, no, we want it covered." And so that's what I'm saying, it's like, if they're using that, they're gonna use this. And so, you know, it's, it's just, you're gonna have to sign it that it's not gonna be that. And, and so that was, that was just my immediate thought, like, how are you gonna enforce that that's not a pickleball court? Because I betcha it's a pickleball court. So, that was just, I mean, that was my experience. And that's, and that's not a very, um, impervious. I mean, it's just sort of a shade structure, but they want shade. So, that's, that's gonna be our new pickleball court unless you do a whole lot to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Burden Pearson, thirty-nine Pillow Road. Um, I want to clarify something about how the voting was done the night we gave our opinions. Uh, we were given a little red sticker, and we were asked to walk around and put that sticker on a, on a placard that was hanging down under each of the plans. Uh, Plan One did receive the most of those red stickers. And I also want to suggest that this is what you do for overflow of your tents, is this area right here. And I don't know if you could do anything with overflow parking on this already degraded area, but that would be a little bit better. And the last thing I want to talk, or ask, just to ask, of the farmer's market, how many actual farmers that come regularly are certified for organic agriculture? Yeah. I mean, I just mean the ones that are actually orga- organically certified farmers.
Organically certified certification comes along.
Yeah.
They have organic, uh, practices, specifically how they, how they, they are not organically certified because of the...
Okay. Okay, okay. Now, that's a serious, that means we have no idea.
Um, that path, um, and then hang a right under the pavilion and to the, um, circle where you can load in to the pavilion. So, tents could be along there and that creates our loop. And I would like to see that costed out as Phase One. Phase Two, uh, potentially, uh, could be the, the D and all the stuff in the middle. And we can always put some climbing stuff in somewhere in there for a playground.
Okay, I think I understood that essentially what you'd be talking about Phase One would be... Yeah, if you can.
Yeah, the circular load unload, yeah.
Numbers four, two, three, one, is Phase One.
The pavilion.
Yeah, so...
Yep, yep.
All this and this will be Phase One. This and this will be Phase Two.
Phase Two. Phase Three could be pickleball. The walking loop's already there, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's already just mode.
Well, that, in this, this design at least, it's crushed granite gravel for that one-third mile that goes around.
Oh, it is?
Sort of a bean shape. The intervening has our mode areas, but if you're looking at just the...
There's, with, with the amount of money we'd be spending on this park, right, currently, we would need to make the, well, would we need to make every trail? Well, not every trail, but we would need to have ADA accessibility.
Yeah, everything that's within, like where you're gonna have your farmer's market kind of area, you would need to make it ADA accessible.
So, there can be continued discussions on whether the walking loop needs to be improved.
So, I would want that wa, the big walking loop to just be mode like it currently is in Phase One.
Yeah.
Other thoughts or direction requests from Council, Councilor Rosengard?
I request that before we do anything, that we go and have Google Earth, as I mentioned earlier, have an overlay and then spray paint the areas that you are talking about doing these things on.
Yeah, we can cer, we can certainly, it sounds like that that was something that, um, staff could work with, uh, the design.
We can, we'll work with, we can at least get the overlay, and then staff can work on a later date, like you said, post Art Fest, uh, and the post-trailer adventure day, doing some markings.
And is this, and just to clarify, is this something that is gonna be presented at the next, um, Planning and Environmental Committee meeting?
Tend to put a date on to have a meeting on May eighth if, um, council would like them to look at that.
Okay. I just didn't know if it was already said as far as they tend to, or council wanted to provide any directions for... Because if, if we're talking about a couple of things, so, you know, if we're, we're bringing back, um, you know, iterations, that's, you know, something we could do as part of the budget process too, right? You know, we're gonna be, the first thing we do is, is first thing, okay, what is Phase One? You know, what would this kind of look like from a updated cost model? But also, if we want to move forward with a construction document for that Phase One budgeting for that. If we're gonna be marking the trails, that's obviously something, something we have to do after Art Fest and after, you know, that event clears. And so bringing that back, you know, would give us time to take this to, um, at least, you know, the committees that Councilmember Burrell mentioned, which is Planning, Environmental, and Public Works, you know, and, and I think the idea there is we want to give them the direction about what council wants to get back from them, if it's, you know, opinions on, you know, the, what council has said, let's, what would you do as far as phasing this, what would you eliminate, you know? I think that's, you know, clearer direction than just presenting this to them and then getting a grab bag of additional, you know, comments. But again, I think what I'm hearing is that at some point, we can bring this back to council with a couple of different things. One is having a chance for council to go out there and look at the, the features kind of institute with markings and with the overlay information, having the committees examine this in some fashion and provide feedback to council. And then also working on some budgetary modeling, you know, for, um, some potential phasing of, of the different structures. And then at a council meeting, I'm estimating this will probably be June before we bring this back. We have one council meeting in June, but we might want to revisit it at that time before we get deep into the budget season. And I'll work with staff on exactly, you know, when that would fit in the agenda. But I think that seems like to me the timeline we'd be working with at least initially. If we wait longer than June, of course, we have the two breaks and we're into the middle of, you know, budget season, when I don't want to have to be making, you know, additional decisions. What I'd like to do is have at that June meet, by that June meeting, um, you know, have something that we can take into our budget and, and actually bring back as part of the budget process. So, that would be my goal at least.
I agree.
Councilmember Burrell?
Yeah, I, on the, the, I've heard a number of comments about the overflow parking. And if, if I understand correctly, the, the purpose of that is if and when, in some unknown future date, the Burger Center parking lot's not available, then that space will be there to cover. And I appreciate that, but I, it seems to me perhaps more reasonable, given the discussion, just to completely ax that for now. And let's cross that bridge when we get there, if the, if there's not a, if there's no reason to develop. And I would just leave it either undeveloped or perhaps, you know, do more green boundary. Obviously, we, we don't want to invest, you know, uh, half, half a million dollars on that and then come back the next year and pave it over.
There was gonna be no money spent on that. It was gonna remain undeveloped. It's, probably shouldn't have been, yeah, put it on the plan.
I guess, I guess my explanation would be to consider just basically removing that.
Remove it from the plan.
Removing that from the plan altogether.
I think that the, it's not much money, but there would be a fence, right, that would, that would be put up around that space because...
Well, we'd probably put up a fence regardless. We're, we're probably gonna put a fence, right?
Probably, likely.
Likely we'd put up a fence, given that there's a school right there, so. Schools.
We could make it Phase Seven.
Yeah, the fence is Phase Seven.
So, what I am planning on doing based on the feedback and please, if you have additional ones, would be my direction that I'm taking back to staff is to, um, take this to the, the committee, the Planning and Environmental Committee, the Public Works Committee. I think what we want to do for Public Works is ask them, you know, where they can do some value engineering on the actual physical components and structures, not necessarily make recommendations on the overall plan. They can, of course, if they want to, but I think what we're looking for is, you know, can we make sure the costs are accurate? Or are there ways that we can do this in such a way, fashion, that we can take that back to, um, the design team? And, you know, maybe that, maybe there's some considerations that might, actually might be needed that we're not, you know, being considered now. But I think that's what we want from Public Works. From Planning Environmental, I, what I think we were asking them to do is, given a chance to look at this plan, obviously, a lot of them also were in attendance to the, the town hall. But, you know, the council feedback is that we want to try to phase this and prioritize this. And so I think what we'd be looking for is some further feedback from the, the committee in terms of what their priorities are um, so that we can incorporate that, knowing that council is already looking at phasing this as a, as a approach to, um, the next steps for this project. Um, and Councilor Metekis?
So, to, the feedback would be their feedback on, um, the phasing pattern, not yes or no, we're doing it, but...
Right.
How would you phase it? Yeah, that's, okay.
And then I would also be, um, working with staff, and staff would be working with Mend to provide some sort of way to better visualize, um, some of the, the, the different components of this. And I think some of that would just be, like you said, providing like a, an overlay. I think it's easy enough to do. I saw Councilmember Johnson doing that, right, as you're talking. But I think more importantly, as you go out into those areas, having some, some identifiers, right? And doing that in a way that we're not disruptive to, you know, the, the space out there after Art Fest so that we can, you know, use that as a way of giving council additional guidance. My goal would be, again, to make a decision on, um, from a budgetary perspective, what we can bring back for the budget cycle planning in July and August. The, the direction, you know, at that, that we'd be getting at that, probably that first meeting in June. Once we've had a chance to go through those processes, have council have a chance to go out there and explore the area and then get final direction before going back and bringing back the budgetary number for what we'd be doing for the next fiscal year. Councilor Metekis?
Um, Councilmember Johnson, is it possible to do like a AI three-D, uh, tour with? I'm just saying, where you want to see the visual. I mean, that would be kind of cool, and then you could really see.
I think we'll explore the various ways that we can present the information and, you know, we do have access to drones, but I'm not sure. I, I mean, I, I think for, for me, what would be helpful is, to Councilmember Rosengard's point, is being able to go out to the site and, and have like, okay, here's, here's kind of the boundaries of the trails, you know, that, and, well, more importantly, I think the, you know, the current concept, the pavilion, the D, well, it's the road, I mean, that's... But if we wanted to paint, you know, the, the size of the pavilion on the road, you know, to show exactly how much, you know, remit takes up, which is, like you said, that... Yeah, I think so, yeah. And, and also, like, I think it'd be helpful to see kind of where, you know, the, the D is and, and, and sort of like the access points and the pickleball court, you know, to that, that pocket. But I, I think that would be helpful just in terms of being able to visualize some of the, the, how the space is used once we start conceptualizing some of the plans. Councilor Rosengard?
And the reason being is, I want to know how many trees are we gonna be taking down? Because when you walk it, like I said, the south side that's between the elementary and the uplets, that is very thick. And then you get to where that walkway is closer to the elementary, and then all of a sudden, you see the elementary and you see the playground. But that's very thick in there.
Yeah.
Be nice to keep it.
All right. Any additional feedback? I think we have a, a plan for bringing this back. And I'll, and we may bring it back at the, a sooner meeting than that, but like I said, I think that's the goal is by that last meeting that we'll be having before our break, um, to, um, to have some, you know, budgetary direction that we can follow, so. Um, council, I really appreciate everybody's input into this. Um, community members, I really appreciate all the feedback. I think it gives council, you know, great guidance to hear directly from residents. I always said that. I really appreciate the, uh, the farmer's market coming and giving their representation. Um, obviously, I want to also just emphasize, I think, the importance of other stakeholders. You know, residents are obviously who we're representing, but, you know, I, I think the partnerships we have are just, you know, to be a very important part of, um, what we can do as a city too, and you guys have been great partners to work with for the last several years. So, I appreciate that. And I also want to thank staff for all the work they put into this, um, to, um, to bring ideas and, you know, proposals to council, and then, you know, having to shape that feedback session is a lot of work for you guys too, but I really appreciate that effort. And I especially want to thank Mend. I think that you guys did, like I said, an excellent job throughout this process, not only for this effort, but all the efforts you do for us. I've been very happy with, in terms of like the outcomes and the ability for council to actually react to those. I think that's been important too, so thank you again. All right. Council, we're gonna move on to our last agenda item, which is, uh, item number nine, Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action on an Amendment to the Financial Policies three, one, seven, General Fund Reserve Policy and one oh three, General Financial Guidelines, as recommended by the Budget and Finance... Finance Committee. And we'll begin, I think, with the staff introduction to this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we talked about spending money, now we get to talk about saving money, right? Yay! So FP 317, in its original form, it's very, very short, very, you know, doesn't really go into any sort of detail. So the Long Range Financial Planning Committee, which most recently met and as an ad hoc committee and updated the plan in 2024, in all three iterations of the plan, there has been a recommendation that Council should, you know, invest in kind of buffing up the, the General Fund Reserve Policy. You know, there's no policy that governs how and when reserves funds should be utilized. A policy should be developed, which guides Council in the utilization of reserve funds. And most recently, with the last, with our current budget that was adopted last September, with, with Council's motion and action, we changed the reserves from 12 months, so 100% of general fund revenue to, back to what it was before, which was 18 months, so 150%. So already, there was a discrepancy because the policy had been changed to be 100, to be 12 months. So we wanted to make sure that the policy aligned with what the reserves actually were. And just in doing some research, and at a conference I attended, attended a budgeting presentation put on by the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, and that's where I found this article about reserves and government reserves. And I thought it was a really good article, I think, and it honestly sums up what Sensa Valley has already done in practice. And so it's just taking ideas and concepts from that article, talking about it with the Budget and Finance Committee. We talked about this article honestly twice back in September, and then at our most recent meeting, and really applying that to the policy. So that, the article recommends, and Sensa Valley has actually done this, that our reserves are our insurance, right? It's our rainy day fund. It's in case of disaster, we have funds to keep the city, to keep the essential operations going. But reserves are also a savings account. And the biggest example of this is when the city bought this, built the $8 million new campus, the new Public Works and garage, and the new Police Department facility, we utilize reserve funds, which is actually why we changed it from 18 months down to 12 months. So this new policy basically addresses both of those, those issues, but it does, we worked with the Budget and Finance Committee in sort of putting some guidelines and stopgaps. So, you know, the reserve should never, well, reserves may only be used for essential services during a dramatic revenue loss, and that was defined as 15% or greater drop in the trailing 12 months of sales tax revenue. And in the case of an economic downturn, reserves may only be used after a mid-year rebudgeting process has been completed to minimize subsidies and reduce departmental spending. So basically, we wouldn't dip into, or before dipping into reserves, in case of an economic downturn, Council, the mayor's staff would work on where are ways we could tighten the budget? Maybe we, you know, don't do events, or maybe, you know, there are actions we could take before dipping into reserves. You know, the reserves would be a last resort. And then also, if reserves are used, like in the example of the city saving up for the new city facilities, if reserves are as a, as a savings account for capital expenditures, use of reserves for capital projects must be part of a long-term financial plan and must not reduce the reserve below 12 months, 100% of the average revenue benchmark. Basically, meaning that, that 12-month reserve as part of the larger 18-month reserve, that is indeed just the rainy, the rainy day fund, the emergency fund. And so capital funds shouldn't take it below that, that threshold. And that's generally, we just had to make one minor change to FP 103, which has been amended many times over the years, but that's our General Financial Guidelines. And then the, under the Financial Principles section, it mentions the 12-month reserve, so it just needs to be changed to 18-month reserve. So there was just one, one little red line in that one. So be happy to answer any comments, questions.
Yeah, the side item, I just want to comment that I'm very pleased with the recommendations that came out of Budget and Finance. We've been looking at this for a while, you know, in terms of like having a definition for what that, that trigger is, you know, having a definition for that this can also be used in a couple of different ways. One is this, you know, kind of savings, but we have a core value. And anytime we use that for construction, it has to be part of our longer financial plan. So I want to commend the Budget and Finance Committee for what I think is a reasonable change in our financial policies. Thank you for that effort, and Councilor Rosen?
I move to approve the amendments to FP 317 and 103.
Second? All right, that opens up for discussion. Councilmember Burrell?
Yeah, I think the, I think the amendments, I support the amendments. I think that it provides a, a very good balance between having potential access to funds for, under certain specific circumstances, as well as serving the rainy day function, as well as serving as a saving mechanism. So I think it's a great idea.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Council, before we adjourn, I just want to exhort everybody to attend upcoming Art Fest. That's coming up here in just a very short order. I know Caitlin's been doing a lot of work to, to get ready for the festival, in addition to all the arts commissions, as well as Michelle. Really looking forward to and hoping for really great weather as we go forward. So if you, if you're out there as a resident and you attend, you also have an opportunity to volunteer. I think we've got a number of volunteer sponsors that are still available. So Art Fest is our biggest city-sponsored event, and I think it's been growing every year and just been amazing to see. So thank you for all the work prepared, and we're lucky to have that in our city and get into experience here in a couple of weeks. With that, take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We're adjourned at 8:20. Oh. Oh, great, thank you.